First, School District Number 67 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, March 20th, 2012. There was an executive session held at 5:30 PM. There was no action taken. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson?
President.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Penderzky?
Here.
Mrs. Rose, absent. Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mrs. Walton?
Here.
You have a quorum.
We would like to amend the agenda as we have some students in our audience who would probably like to get home. So, Board members, may I have a motion to move the Mandarin immersion report to right after the superintendent's report?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
As a part of the superintendent's report, sorry. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to everyone. Thanks for being here. I do have a president's report. We have had a very busy month, making progress in a number of new areas that I would like to share with you briefly. First of all, we had Deerpath Middle School principal interviews. Bill Anderson spent several hours last week included in those. Bill, could you please update the community on that process?
Certainly, Julia. The community and the district have gone through a very extensive process looking to replace the principal at Deerpath. And it started with a survey that went out to members of the community. Then, several weeks ago, the superintendent and Leslie Fisher and myself, Andy Hendrickson, and a couple of other people took part in a listening session with about forty Deerpath teachers, and listened to them about things and qualifications and characteristics that they were interested in finding for the, in the new superintendent, excuse me, the new principal. From that, they compiled sort of a list of characteristics which they thought were desirable for the principal, and started with a pool of around fifty candidates, which were narrowed then down to ten candidates, who were reviewed by, interviewed by an administrative team. And they narrowed the group down to four. And then a group of us, which composed of myself, Dr. Griffith, the superintendent-designate, Mr. Simic, four Deerpath teachers, and two APT executives, spent about six hours last week interviewing the top four candidates. And while there's no final decisions yet, I have to say we're very impressed with the process and very impressed with the quality of candidates that we have, so...
Bill, can you speak a little closer into the mic?
Very impressed with the quality of candidates we have. So, kudos to the people in the district, and particularly Joe, who coordinated the search. And I think I'm very optimistic about a very positive outcome.
Thank you, Bill. In addition to the work on hiring the principal, we also have contract negotiations occurring. Leslie Fisher and John Julian are on the negotiating team for the LFAA contract, which is the teachers' union, and they have already met several times. And Rick Schuler is serving on the negotiation team for the SEIU contract. This is the union for all the support staff. Those contracts will expire this summer, I believe at the end of August. In addition, the faculty will all be completing sexual harassment training by April 1st via an online tutorial offered through the Global Compliance Network. We are exploring the possibility of partnering with the City of Lake Forest for some training opportunities with Lee Jeter, who is the director of the Northwestern University's Sexual Harassment Prevention Office. Mrs. Jeter has responsibility for anti-harassment training, sexual harassment policy development, and claims investigation and resolution for students, faculty, and staff across the university. In addition, I would like to thank all of our APT Board of Ed liaisons, who not only attend all of our board meetings, but also represent their schools in quarterly meetings. They met again recently with Dr. Griffith and Whipple, and in light of the recent student deaths in our community, Dr. Griffith included special guest John Mayer from Lake Forest High School. He is dean, counselor, and crisis team member, and he talked about high school student support. They all, the group also discussed data from the Mandarin immersion program, parent questions regarding ISAT testing times, the world language format in fourth grade, and the filter that will be added to the netbooks over spring break. The Board of Ed liaisons will then take this information back to their subsequent APT boards. Thanks for your time. Also, our new superintendent, Mike Simic, was in town last week. He joined us for the Deerpath Middle School principal interviews, and he met with the administration. He is, he will be returning to Lake Forest the first week in April to meet with our principals and faculty. In addition, on Wednesday, April 4th, we will have a community reception from 6:00 to 7:00 PM to welcome Mike and his family. I would encourage everyone to please come and welcome our new superintendent and his family to our community. Then finally, the Policy Committee met on Wednesday, March 7th, at 8:00 AM jointly with District 115. Those present were Lori Rose, John Julian, Bill Anderson, and myself, together with District 115 Board members Todd Bergner, Monty Edson, and Sharon Golan. In addition, Shelley Anderson, legal counsel, and Dr. Griffith attended. We discussed the recommendations from the SAFE report regarding cooperation with investigations and misconduct of district employees. We also discussed social media policies, looking at sample policies both from the IASB as well as other local districts. The committee will meet again on Monday, April 9th, at 8:00 AM. And the Policy Committee is officially Lori Rose, John Julian, and myself. But as I have said in the past, if any board member would like to attend, it really is quite a, a very interesting and in-depth conversation, and you are welcome to do so. That concludes the president's report and brings us to the superintendent's report.
Madam President, members of the board and members of the audience, thank you for being here tonight. Wow, beautiful, wonderful turnout, so thank you for being here. Well, I have a couple of reports, but I think we want to get right away to the main report that we're going to have. And this is about our Mandarin immersion program. So those of you who are here for the Mandarin immersion program, thank you so much, and our students ahead of time, because we're going to actually have a little demonstration for the members of our audience here. Our Mandarin immersion program began this year in kindergarten and first grade. We have seventy-one students, which is a very high turnout in our district among our kindergarten, first-grade populations. We have earned $190,000 in grant funds to support the program. We have excellent Mandarin teachers, kindergarten through twelfth grade. There are about five hundred students in District 67 and 115 experiencing Mandarin this year. It's four hundred and, on the plus side, almost five hundred students. So we're very proud of this new initiative, and Board members, I think you'll agree with me with what Dr. Hendrickson has put here for us tonight. This is going to be an interesting little glimpse into our new program. So, Dr. Hendrickson, on behalf of everybody out there in the school district, thank you for bringing our group in today. Well, this is going to be a fun, fun report. We're going to show some learning tonight. So with us tonight is our teacher, Mrs. Chong Jan, and some of her first graders. Andy, do you want to introduce Denise, too? Yes, and this is the first-grade English teacher-partner, Ms. Denise Glazianos, an integral part to our program. So Andy, if we're using the microphone, you need to speak real close to it.
小朋友晚上好
踢足球
踢足球
踢足球打乒乓球
好，打乒乓球
打乒乓球打棒球
打棒球
打棒球打冰球
打冰球
打冰球
打乒乓球
打乒乓球
好，打乒乓球
可以
我喜欢打冰球
打冰球，好，真棒。齐老师，Ensign，你喜欢什么运动？ 在这你说我喜欢打乒乓球
我喜欢踢足球
真棒，踢足球，非常好。好，Lei，你喜欢什么运动？
我喜欢踢足球
我喜欢踢足球
好，Chuan，你喜欢什么运动？
我喜欢踢足球
Chuan也喜欢
踢足球
Li，你喜欢什么运动？
我喜欢踢足球
踢足球，非常好，Li喜欢
踢足球
好，非常好，齐老师再找下一个。好，Liu，你喜欢什么运动？Liu在哪里？在这
踢足球
Liu喜欢
踢足球
踢足球，好。Fei，你喜欢什么运动？
我喜欢乒乓球
Fei喜欢
乒乓球
好，Bi，你喜欢什么运动？ 打冰球，和Bi喜欢
打冰球
我喜欢乒乓球
Shi喜欢
乒乓球
Ling喜欢什么运动？ Ling喜欢
踢足球
还是哪个？Wei喜欢什么运动？
打冰球
De，你喜欢什么运动？
踢足球
好，De喜欢
踢足球四个小
四个，对不对？ 一二三四
四个
四个，好的，齐老师数一下，一
二三四
Chuan 八个，来数一下，一 八个，好。齐老师写一个字，最 Fang
踢足球
非常好，对吗？
对
真棒，踢足球的小朋友有八个，最多。
打乒乓球
打乒乓球，对吗？
不对
不对，要想一想，好的
打棒球
打棒球，对吗？
对
为什么呀？因为它是几？
零站起来
好 你是我们的阳光，准备好了吗？
准备好了
一二三，开始 幸福派首歌，准备好了吗？
准备好了
一二三，开始
如果感到幸福你就闪现呀
好，非常好，真棒 谢谢
谢谢
再见来跟大家说再见
Well, that is the highlight of our board report. Way to go. There's actually a really big story to tell this year. We've got a lot of information in this board report that we created. I made enough copies for our audience, and you have in your packets, so achievement, interest, engagement, learning in Mandarin, learning and reading, parent support for the program. Everything is going so well. We're so proud of our students. We have two parents tonight, Mandarin immersion parents, first-grade parents, that are going to speak to you about their love of the program. So I'd like to introduce Lena Sergi and Martha Zeeman, and that'll be the end of our Mandarin report. Right here, Martha. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Martha Zeeman, and I have a seventh-grade son who takes Mandarin, a fourth-grade daughter who takes Mandarin at Everett, and Brian takes Mandarin at Cherokee. And one of the, it's an amazing program. I'm so happy that we were able to get Brian into the program because now he'll be able to catch up to his brother and sister. And if, for any parents who have lots of children who might be taking the language, it's an amazing experience to watch my children speak to each other. I know in a few years it's going to be a problem because my husband and I are not at the same level. So the other night at dinner, we actually, they were speaking to each other and we were, you know, and they were only saying, "We're tired, we're hungry." I can only imagine what it will be in a couple of years, but it's amazing, and they actually really help each other. Brian is willing to listen to his older siblings, helping him where he never would have listened, or his sister listens to older brother helping with Mandarin. That doesn't happen with any other subject. It's because they can't come to us, so they actually have to rely on each other, and it's wonderful, a benefit that we never thought about. So we are absolutely grateful that we had the program. I think the teachers are doing a phenomenal job, and we are thrilled to be part of it.
My name is Lena Atar, actually, not Sergi, so my husband doesn't get mad, but he's not in the room. My daughter, Aaliyah, she was performing today. She's in first grade, and we've had a great experience so far this year. We actually moved from Everett to Cherokee for the program, and we were a little bit nervous about doing that because she loved Everett and loved her school. But we kind of tried it out, and she adjusted within a week. She loves Cherokee, completely feels part of the community, and we feel part of the community. I'm actually a room mother for the class. We have nothing but positive feedback for the Mandarin program. My younger daughter, Rayanne, is starting kindergarten next year at Cherokee, so she'll be in the program as well. And I'm looking forward to have that kind of interaction that Martha was talking about. Another thing, that's like a personal part of our family, that we are Middle Eastern and we've been trying to teach, I've been trying to teach the kids Arabic in the home, and they've been, Aaliyah's been resistant. She's very attached to English, and she's a very good student, and she wasn't open to learning such a foreign language, especially with the characters and the different kinds, types of writing. And since we began the Mandarin program, she has started wanting to learn Arabic in a much broader way. She doesn't think that it's hard or that it's foreign, and she sees all the other children learning with her the Mandarin. And I just feel like just that little bit of opening up your worldview, even at that age, is so important because now she talks about the world in a different way, and her attachment to where we're from, and attachment to wanting to go to China, wanting to visit Europe, wanting to learn French and Spanish on all levels. So I'm really, really happy with also the cultural element that this is bringing into our children's lives. Thank you.
So I have a, I have a question for either of you. And
Oh, I'm sorry. We were like out the door.
So Mrs., what, what made you make the choice to do that? Because that's a lot of work if you're, if you're an Everett family.
For me, honestly, the, just the fact that it was an immersion program being offered in Lake Forest, it could have been any language. Obviously Mandarin is very important, but if it was a Spanish immersion, we would have done it. It's just that you feel in four or five years, if they're in from kindergarten to fourth grade, you're giving your child a gift of fluency, which is so important now and so hard to get. We were, we were in the Language Stars program where they would go once a week and do the hour and fifteen minutes, which is great, but you will not be fluent in a language just doing that. So this was next to learning a language at home, and I felt like I did not hesitate at all. For me, it was just her personal attachment to Everett, which she became even more attached to Cherokee later.
Thanks. We're, we're actually an Everett family, too. And for me personally, the mornings are kind of crazy because I have to go to Cherokee and Everett, but we worked it out, and it's fine, and it, it works great. We actually have become really, from a community standpoint, we've gotten to know a whole other school, which we didn't, I mean, we certainly know people from Cherokee, but I didn't have any experience there. And Brian's dad went to Cherokee, so he's really happy to be the only one who got to go there, too, and be a cheetah. But the reason, we didn't think twice. I mean, I, the transportation was never going to be a stumbling block for us because we wanted Brian to have that experience. We've actually lived overseas, and the cultural experience that it's opening for him and for the, for the rest of our children is, is worth any hassle factor from our standpoint. But it really, none of these schools are that far apart. It's really not something to, to make it be a stumbling block, in my opinion.
But I would like to add one thing about transportation. Aaliyah used to take the bus last year, and that was great. And my younger daughter goes to preschool at the Montessori, but if, for me, the transportation to Cherokee by shuttle and then shuttle to Everett and then, like, bus to Everett and shuttle from Everett to Cherokee really was not an option. I didn't think that that was an option that would work for us. I felt it was too much for the kids and in the winter and stuff. So I hope that maybe later when there are more Sheridan and Everett families joining the program that there could be some kind of shuttle that would pick up these children directly from their homes and take them into Cherokee, and that would be a great option for, for our families. Otherwise, I just drive her, for now.
Well, thanks for, thanks for sharing. Thank you very much. Really learned a lot.
Wow, thank you so mu, that was, wasn't that wonderful? Yeah, thank you, Andy. Thank you so much, and to our teachers, too, for organizing that. Board members, have another report, brief report that we'd like to share with you with the second tragedy, at, recent tragedy at Lake Forest High School. There's been a lot of activity both at Lake Forest High School and now we have gotten started out in the community as a small community wellness task force has been formed, starting on March 7th, composed of agents from different organizations in our community, Croya, the city of Lake Forest, Lake Forest Hospital, our school districts. And the whole objective is that if we could find a way to assess the resources in our community that would support the mental health of our, of our youth, establishing inventory of what's in place, what's working, what can be improved and what is lacking that could create stronger interconnection among our various agencies on behalf of our youth who may be at school or actually not at school when they're in crisis. What could we do that could make us do better or help us do better? And how could we acknowledge and communicate that amongst ourselves? So that has gotten started. Board members, I have a copy of this task force minutes, and I'll keep providing them to you as we go along. We have the advantage of having Deputy Chief Glenn Burmeister is here tonight. Glenn, thank you so much for being here. Glenn, representing and the liaison for the city of Lake Forest, has been assisting behind the scenes and has been our community representative on a Lake Forest, excuse me, on a Lake County Suicide Prevention Task Force. So Glenn, thank you for being here. I felt that you could share in a few moments just a perspective that could be helpful to all of us, and again, this is all about how we can create better connections among our, the adults in our community on behalf of our youth.
Thank you, Doctor, and kudos really go out to Dr. Griffith for bringing this group together. It consists of members from Croya, all the school districts, the city, parent groups. And we just had our first meeting, and then we had a little subcommittee meeting, but it was very well-attended and a lot of energy in that group, so I anticipate some good things coming out of that. Prior to that, after the first incident in January, in addition to that, Lake County was experiencing an increase in suicides. So they had already formulated a Lake County task force for that purpose. I joined that in February due to the increased number that we're having in Lake County. But that's not unusual. That's a national trend that's going on, and we're, we went down. It peaked in about 2003, went down, and now we're back up to those 2003 levels. So I just wanted to say that we're working. There have been, we've done some work with the Union Pacific Police for trespassing enforcement at that particular location in front of the high school. The city has formulated a bicycle path committee to look at all our areas, and I'm sure that they will concentrate on that area by the high school as well. The railroad has erected fences, re-erected fences, extended the fences. The city has provided a parking lot for the students to park, where another area that they like to park behind, in the 1300 block of Northwestern, is private property. That's posted as a tow-away zone, but that's up to the private property owner to call for toes for that. So that's just a little update, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenn. And board members, again, there'll be more that will develop over time. And just a, just a quick word on a couple of other things. Recently, Lake Forest High School sponsored a program attended by almost 200 people. At Lake Forest High School, where Dr. John Yocum, who is a clinical psychologist and a specialist in suicide, gave a hour-long talk. There were lots of questions. He was there to speak to the community. Similarly, John, Dr. Yocum, had spent the Friday before, this is two Fridays ago, with our high school faculty and our staff. We spent the whole morning together. We were talking about preventative issues, what are national trends, just as Deputy Chief Burmeister said. And in addition, we've had, we've had some other presentations going on. We had Stedman Graham here in Lake Forest a week ago, talking about your passport to success on behalf of our students during the day. He met with many students in small settings, talking about understanding your identity, and how to do that, and how every day counts when it comes to a successful presentation of yourself. It was really excellent. This was, Stedman Graham was selected, actually, by two clubs of students at Lake Forest High School, actually last spring. And so, both at Deer Path Middle School and at Lake Forest High School, we're coordinating among our staff and parents, across ways, I would include, of course, Lake Bluff Middle School and St. Mary's, and Country Day, ways that we can do a better job of connecting as adults among our school efforts also. So a lot of that is underway. There's a lot of activity. I do want to say that Dr. Julie Cooley is our liaison to the task force, and thank you, Dr. Cooley, for taking the leadership also in this, because you've done a really good job for that. And it's only the start, though, board members. So if you have questions, you can always direct those to Dr. Cooley or myself, if we can help you with those. But we'll be, we'll be giving more announcements as time prevails. Any questions you would have, again, maybe of Glenn, or of Julie, or myself?
Could I say, I attended the presentation at the high school with Dr. Yocum, and it was extremely interesting. It was about two and a half hours, and I think nobody left, and it was, I learned a tremendous amount about the topic. And also, I just commend the people in the district who've been working on this, including the superintendent. I think bringing together different parts of the community is the right way to address something like this, and Dr. Cooley as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And then finally, board members, March is Youth Art Month nationwide. So please, on your way out tonight, or anytime between now and I think April 5th or 6th, stop by in the, look at Art Gallery 300 downstairs. Every fourth grader in the school district has an art, piece of art on display. So just stop by, wander through, and you, on your way out, I think you'll find that interesting. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. And this brings us to public participation. If there is anyone that is interested in addressing the board, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. Each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Public comment should not be redundant. And then, in addition to provide accurate responses, detailed questions posed to the board during public comment will be listened to and taken under advisement. The public is always welcome to meet with school officials to receive information, discuss ideas, or express concerns. If you have any written materials or letters, you can please hand them to our board clerk. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Beecham. I reside at 630 Meadowwood Drive in Lake Forest. I've got a number of questions here for each of the board members. My first, and for Dr. Griffith. My first question is directed to you, Dr. Griffith. Dr. Griffith, we now know from the SAFER report that you did indeed know in 2009 that Principal Steiner's texts were sexual in nature. Why did you lie to the parents and the community in 2011 and tell them just the opposite? Do you have a response?
We are not going to be responding to each question. Please state your questions, and after everyone has spoken, we may or may not respond. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wald, as you know, there is a petition circulating in the community asking you to take a vote on firing Dr. Griffith for his lying, and for his failure to uphold the ethics and the standards in the district. There are currently over 100 people thus far who have asked the board to take a vote on this issue. Why have you ignored the request to vote on this matter? You have no response. Okay, Mr. Penderzki, why did you lie to the parents and the community in November of 2011, telling them that you didn't know that Principal Steiner's texts were sexual?
Next question.
Ms. Fisher, when the SAFER report disclosed information about the actual content of Mr. Cyrus's interview with Principal Steiner, and you discovered that Dr. Griffith and the legacy board members from 2009 had lied in November 2011 about what they knew in 2009, what was your reaction? What, if anything, did you do?
Next question.
Okay. Mr. Julian, same question.
Same answer.
Mr. Schuler, same question.
We'll respond at the end.
All right. Mr. Anderson, same question. I'd like to know from anybody on the board, how it is in the best interests of the students in this district to show them that lying pays, that lying is tolerated, that lying has no consequences.
Next question.
All right, I have a statement. Board members, by tolerating, ignoring, and sweeping under the rug the lies told by Dr. Griffith, Ms. Wald, and Mr. Penderzki, you are setting an unacceptable example for the community. You are essentially saying that we condone lying when it serves our purpose. Each one of you, your silence, your lack of condemnation for the liars among you, makes you each complicit in the lie and the cover-up of what has transpired in the district since 2009. Do you plan to run this district going forward with such gross negligence and complete disregard for the high standard of excellence that this community expects?
I'd be real careful about putting words in my mouth.
I'm not putting any words in your mouth. And for which Dr. Griffith has been handsomely compensated, and which you promised to uphold when you were elected, I can't believe that any of you would answer yes to that question. So I ask you right here, right now, to either publicly condemn Dr. Griffith's actions or to resign your post.
I think your three minutes are up.
I have one last sentence. Those of you unwilling to do the right thing are clearly more interested in self-preservation than in doing what is right for the students in this district. Tomorrow, I will submit my formal complaint to the ISB, ISEB, asking them to remove each of you for gross negligence, and I trust that the district will be able to make the recording of this meeting available to Mr. Cook and to his investigators.
Thank you, Mr. Beecham. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, Mr. Julian, as the spokesperson for the Deer Path principal matter, is there anything you would like to say?
Yes, I do have a statement, Julian, on behalf of the board, and on behalf of the investigatory committee, which managed the investigation of the Steiner matter. Mr. Beecham, as you know, over the past many months, the public has been offered many opportunities to speak and voice their concerns about the John Steiner matter. The claims made in your petition do not present any new facts. As a matter of fact, the same facts, as well as many others, were reviewed and evaluated both by the investigative subcommittee comprising board members not involved with the board at the time in question, as well as by a professional, independent investigator with an impeccable national record. The conclusion reached by both parties was that there was no wrongdoing by Dr. Griffith or the board, and that the handling of the matter was undertaken in good faith and in accordance with the guidance available at the time. In addition, it was the determination of both, of both that the judgment utilized and decisions made by Dr. Griffith did not rise to the level of concern which would warrant further action. It is apparent that there are those who disagree with conclusions reached. It is certainly their right to disagree. Nevertheless, these are determinations that have been made following thorough investigation, and these are decisions which will stand. We believe that the best use of the board's time and energy is to focus on the future and the many large issues currently facing the district, among them, integration of a new superintendent, teacher contract negotiations, and identification and placement of two new principals. It is our opinion that those who continue to insist that attention be paid to actions which occurred over three years ago, despite a full-fledged independent investigation finding no reason to do so, are seriously detracting from the efforts of the board to best serve the interests of the community as a whole. We ask those who would persist in pressing for additional action to carefully weigh the benefit to the community and the district before continuing with their campaign.
Thank you, John.
Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry, sir, you have had your time. We are done. We are done with-
His comment is inaccurate.
We're done. We are done, Mr. Beecham. Thank you. You may submit something in writing. We are done with public participation.
What I am bringing to light here is what happened in November, not three years ago.
Thank you. We will move on now to, we have already done the Mandarin immersion report update. We will go to board committee reports. This brings us to the Board Education Committee, Leslie Fisher and Bill Anderson.
The Education Committee has not met in the past three weeks, but we will be meeting again Monday, or, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April 17th.
Thank you. The Board Operations Committee, Rick Schuler.
Thank you, Julian. The Operations Committee most recently met on March 6th at the Sheridan School. Present, present at the meeting were Lori Rose, myself, Stephanie Victor, Lisa Mitchell, Rick Lee, Harry Griffith, Alan Albus, Jennifer Hermes, Carol White, Julia Wald, and Cornelius DeBeauze. The meeting was held at 8:30, as I said, at the Sheridan School. Carol White presented the five-year building improvement plan for Sheridan School. She reported that the roof is in good shape. Failed shingles were replaced last summer. Ms. White provided an overview of past drainage issues and explained the work which was done to stop prior flooding. Ironically, about a week after the meeting, there was a backed-up sewer main and-
No, it was the, that, the next day.
Was it the next day?
It was raining 24 hours.
I lose track. And I know both of my kids didn't go to school that day, which was not a good surprise for my wife and I, who were trying to work. But that was ironic, and I think it's the first time that that has happened.
The Operations Committee had not been to Sheridan for a thorough tour in five years. And the building, we talked about, the building was in great shape, and the very next day, for the first time ever, we had to close that school. That's terrible.
That problem was quickly fixed. I will say that it's not urgent, but there is further work to be done regarding proper drainage. The surface parking lot has to be repaved, and the pitch of the landscaping has to be changed eventually to properly drain the water away from the building instead of towards the gymnasium area.
Rick, if you don't mind, if I could just add, a real shout-out to the city of Lake Forest, and to our maintenance staff, because they hustled starting, this is 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning, to really, to try to bring the school, it was obvious it was going to have to be closed, but to bring it back online with the collapse of the sewer line. So they, both groups, and the city was very helpful, did a great job, Carol White and her staff, too.
IT Director Cornelius DeBeauze presented an overview of the five-year technology plan. He reported that six-to-eight-year-old laptop computers need to be replaced. Dr. Griffith explained that the Education Committee is discussing which product will replace the laptops, which is a very interesting issue. We'll report back on that. Cornelius reported that as the district transitions more to wireless, additional wiring will be put in the ceilings for access. Alan Albus presented a brief overview of the Ten Pass Bus Program. In November, the committee endorsed changing the program, and Alan reported that parents appreciated the more family-friendly pass which each student could purchase and which would not expire at the end of the school year. He went on to say that passes are generally used by non-bus riders for after-school playdates, as well as families that carpool to after-school activities. The committee endorsed allowing families to purchase multiple Ten Ride passes. The group discussed installing security cameras at all the schools, with the ultimate goal of getting better coverage, as we have at the high school. Carol reported that she and Cornelius are looking into ways to share the Internet-based system that the high school uses. Couple more items. Dr. Griffith reported that he is meeting with an architect to discuss planning for the new integrated curriculum, which was presented at last month's board meeting. Actually, not the board meeting, but the Board of Education meeting. Much more work remains on this, and we have a lot more to talk about this, and that item will be reported on in more detail, probably in the spring. And with that, the meeting ended with a tour of the Sheridan School.
Thank you very much, Rick. Can I ask Mr. Schuler one question? Regarding the bus passes, the family bus pass, and you said that they were going to do away with the expiration date, when does that take effect? Is that for this year? Do you know? It's not for this year. It begins next year?
Yeah, that's looking at going forward, the new plan.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, and Lori Rose is not here. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee did not meet, okay? Spirit of 67 Foundation, I have a report. Thanks to all the staff who participated in the faculty review that was held, there were two shows, I believe, on February 24th. I was not in attendance, but I did hear rave reviews from those who attended. The Grants Committee has completed its work for everyone on the edge of their seats who can't wait to find out what the grants are that have been awarded. There will be the annual grants reception on April 25th at Elawa Farms. Board members, I would like to encourage you to attend. It really gives you a wonderful perspective on the enrichments and enhancements the Spirit provides to our students. Total donations for the month of February were $1,706 from 15 families. One other date for your calendars is Thursday, May 3rd, which is the annual home tour, and I believe it is going to be previewed in the April issue of Forest and Bluff. That concludes the Spirit report. Were there any other committees that met that a board member would like to offer a report on?
Yeah, Julia, I'll comment on the professional development. So far this school year, over 180 of our staff have enhanced their knowledge of teaching and learning by completing a graduate course, attending a conference, or a workshop, or participating in a district study group. Over 100 of these people have completed at least two such professional development experiences. There's a great variety in the learning, and some notable topics include differentiated assessment strategies, emergent literacy, probability, the mathematics of uncertainty, nurturing resilient kids, real teenagers talking about depression, what great teachers do, and unpacking Common Core standards. The teachers and administrators are currently preparing for summer curriculum work. Two of their primary focuses will be Common Core standards and developing 21st century units of learning. That's pretty much covers it. If anybody has questions or would like more information, I'd be glad to volunteer Andy Hendrickson to answer their questions. How's that?
Thank you, Rick. And I apologize, board members, I just skipped a whole group of reports, so I need to go back to board committee reports. And we have the Board Finance Committee, Jeff Penderzki and John Julian.
The Board Finance Committee hasn't met in the last month. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for April 18th at 7:30 a.m. in this room. And if the schedule changes, it'll be posted on the website. But since this is the busiest time of the year for the Budget Committee, I just kind of want to quickly walk through the milestones, so we all kind of know what's coming, right? So during April, we'll focus on the budget update- So during April, we'll focus on the budget update, how we're doing against the projections. But then also start to look at what to include in next year's budget, and, you know, what are the key educational initiatives, capital improvements, as well as planning for collective bargaining agreements. During May and June, the draft budget gets put together and then is posted. There seemed to be some question about whether or not we, budgets are available. It's posted for public view, probably in July and August, that time period, for at least 30 days. So, just a few final comments. First, the Finance Committee values constructive input during its meeting process, so please feel free to attend. And second, the Finance Committee, as well as all the other board committees, are always looking for new volunteers, so if you have an interest in volunteering, it may not be a bad time to stop by and get that experience. And that concludes the Board Finance Report.
Thank you, Jeff. This brings us to district committees, in which we act as liaisons, and back to you, Jeff, with the North Suburban Special Education District.
So, we have a pretty big story to unpack here tonight about the change in the funding structure of NSSED. And it's a three-part story that's part education, part finance, and whatever Dr. Griffith will say about it. So, maybe I'll, and we're going to vote on this later in the agenda, so, Dr. Griffith, would you, would you probably be the best place to lead in, or Dr. Cooley?
Yeah, we could do the report right now. So, Dr. Cooley and I'll team up. We actually did this two weeks, no, last week, at Lake Forest High School's board meeting. So, thank you, Jeff. Board members, there's been a long study that's been going on, exceeding two years. And this stems from the fact that Lake Forest School District 67 has undertaken a comprehensive study, review, rather, of all costs in the school district. Lake District 67 has the second lowest tax rate in the state of Illinois. We have among the highest test scores in the history of our school district. We have an incredibly diverse program for our students. It's gotten increasingly more diverse. We saw some of that tonight. We can be so proud of our teachers, our parents, and the students that we have. But our board planning teams, our board committees, and other groups who are affiliated with our board study teams have looked at a lot of areas. Shared service alone is, has created, generated millions of dollars of savings over the past eight years. Well, one area that we began the process of looking at, like all other areas, was the cost of being a member of the Special Education Co-op, the North Suburban Special Education District. I'm pleased to report tonight that we've got a recommendation that Dr. Cooley will review with you in just a moment, that lays out a major change in the cost structure of the school districts participating in the NSSED Co-op. This co-op is made up of 18 school districts stretching from Glenview to the south and up the lake shore to Lake Bluff to the north. So, Lake Forest High School and District 67 are both two of the 16 members. The shift at the NSSED level is about making the change from a program that has students in their classes from the 18 partners, to one that is more a consultative co-op. A co-op that is in place to provide consultative services, as well as extremely high-need classroom placements where needed by any of the 18 school districts. It's a safety net now. District 67 began the process a dozen years ago of bringing our special education kids home. And that process was a K-12 one. Dr. Cooley has been instrumental in helping lead that among our teachers and other special education staff. We're pleased to report tonight that the change in structure has, is bringing about a significant savings to District 67. We anticipate over a five-year period, it'll be about $650,000, or about $120,000 or so a year, over the next five years. This is pretty, pretty meaningful. We know that this will be done without any diminishment of service. We feel like we'll be delivering the same quality of services to our own special education, our students of special need, as we have in the past. I'm not going to take the thunder away from Dr. Cooley's report, because she's going to actually report on what our recommendation is, more precisely. But I did want to follow up, because the Finance Committee has also spent time on this. And kudos to our board members who have represented us at the NSSED level, and currently that is Jeff Penderzki, and prior to Jeff, it was Chris Rossman. And both Chris and Jeff did a great job attending special, additional meetings at night each month, going down to Highland Park for the NSSED Co-op meetings. So, Jeff, thank you, because you've been a big part of, I think, what's a really positive outcome. Dr. Cooley?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Griffith, for your remarks. You've been very involved in, which has been very helpful, too, and supportive. So, when we began the journey, we didn't know where the journey would end, but I think it's in some ways ending tonight, and in a very positive way. We were fully prepared to leave NSSED should certain actions not take place, and so we took quite a few steps. Anne Dunn has been, of course, very closely working on the process, and we've worked with Dr. Anne Wertz and Steve Johnson at the high school. And I'd like to throw kudos out to Anne Dunn. She recently passed her special education director's certification process in case we were to need that director, so she put in a lot of extra effort there to do the coursework and so forth that was required for that, so we thank her for that. But as we were continuing our journey, and as Dr. Griffith said, every year, taking on more responsibilities for our own students and doing so successfully, NSSED was, were taking actions, and in the end, all of the actions they took were actually a bonus to District 67. So, it wasn't quite as dramatic at the high school, but one of the really dramatic things that benefited the elementary districts was that there was formerly a dual rate, and elementary districts got charged a double rate, and they removed that, saying there's no purpose for it, there's nothing behind that, and equalized that over the 18 members. So, that was a big win for our districts and for our community. So, the things I'd like you to consider tonight is that we're recommending that we continue this process of programming for our students in district. The most recent change that we made was the Extended Learning Resource Center at Everett School. It was helping students with more significant needs there, so we continue to build that program. That'll eventually move up to the middle school when those students age up, so we're going to be preparing for that about two years down the road. We've had a parent advisory committee in place, and got a lot of very important input and feedback from them along the way, so we want to continue that process as we continue to build. So, I believe you've got a motion before you tonight, and I don't know, Jeff, would you like to talk about what the motion is?
So, the motion tonight, well, in January of 2011, the board issued, our board issued NSSED a letter to... All right. So, in January 2011, this board notified the NSSED Cooperative of our intent to withdraw, and that was an 18-month notice. During that time, there's been a lot of restructuring of the billing structure and figuring out a way for District 67, who's a light user of the cooperative, to stop subsidizing the heavier users of the cooperative. So, I recommend that, and that's in our board packets tonight, so, the recommendation is going to be to rescind that letter, continue on as part of NSSED because of the new structure, because of the lower savings, and you know what? Because it provides a really important insurance policy for children that may come into the district that need those very special services that NSSED provides. So, that's the recommendation.
And we will, we will have an opportunity to discuss it more than...
Yeah, so let's leave it there for now. But it's, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and it's definitely the right thing to do.
Thank you. Okay, now, let's see. I think I'm back on target here. The Illinois Association of School Boards and Ed Red with Bill Anderson.
This month, there is no report.
Thank you, Bill. We had professional development. Curriculum Coordinating Committee did not meet, and I jumped right in there with the Spirit of 67 Foundation report, so that is done. Is there any other committee report that I have missed this evening? Okay, seeing none, now we will go to the recommendations, the approval of the continued membership with NSSED. Dr. Griffith?
Board members, based on all of the, what you just heard, and so much more that's behind that, and really, this, the whole story here is about what a great job our teachers do, special education and regular education, to help our kids be winners, regardless of circumstance. We really need to understand that those are the real heroes in this story, and many thanks to NSSED for being responsive. It was not easy. It took a long time. There was a lot of ups and downs, but NSSED has responded to our need for a more efficient participation, and so kudos to NSSED. The recommendation tonight is that we would recommend that you approve a motion to remain a member of NSSED and a partner of NSSED, and therefore rescind the withdrawal letter submitted in January 2011.
And, so basically, this is projected annual savings. This is due to the decrease in expenses and the increase in revenues, each of about $60,000, so it's about $120,000 annually. Are there any questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, a motion to approve rescinding the notice to NSSED?
I move that we vote to rescind the notice to NSSED.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Oh, and to remain a member, okay, let's say that again. A, is it? Oops, oops, I've got too many layers here. It's right here. Okay, oh, there it is. Okay, I apologize. To approve the motion to remain a member and partner of NSSED, and therefore rescind the withdrawal letter submitted in January of 2011.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us, why am I having such issues here? Okay, sorry about that. This brings us to our consent agenda items. I'm just trying to delay the meeting. The approval of minutes from both a regular meeting and an executive session on February 28th. The adoption of the resolution for designation of depositories. The adoption of the resolution authorizing participation in the ISDLAF plus fund. The approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statement for February 2012, disbursements totaling $520,526, $520,526, and payrolls totaling $1,468,064. And the February 2012 financial report. In addition, we have the approval of human resource items. And in terms of record of closed meetings and disposal of audio recordings, there are none. Is there any item that a board member would like removed from the consent agenda for Okay. Okay. Under the approval of human resources items, those include the approval of leave requests, the approval of new staff, the approval of retirements, the approval of status changes, and the approval of non-renewals. And that is Dr. Griffith's letter of retirement, effective June 30th, 2012. Okay. Now, is there any item that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penderzki?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
And Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have a number of FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne of 331 East Blodgett Avenue in Lake Bluff, Illinois, 60044. To be specific, that was 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne. We have Invo Healthcare Associates in Jamison, Pennsylvania, also with a FOIA request. Is there any item that a board member would like placed on a future agenda? Seeing none, we move to announcements. Friday, March 24th, spring break begins at the end of the day, although you could just stay here with weather like this. Monday, April 2nd, schools reopen. April 9th to 20th, we have NWEA and MAP testing for grades 2 through 8. And on Tuesday, April 24th, we have the Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. at Lake Forest High School West Campus here in the boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.